Good morning. I would like to call to order the Board of Commissioners meeting for April 21st, 2025. Roll call vote please.
Donna Lawson.
Here.
Tim Byer.
Here.
Scott Pell.
Here. Okay, uh, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the March 3rd, March 24th, and April 14th meetings. Do I have a motion?
I'm gonna move that we table these minutes. Uh, we don't have the April 14th, 2025 minutes and since we have some new personnel in the office, we, uh, I'm proposing we table them so that we make them more refined and consistent.
Donna, you have anything?
No.
I'll second that. Uh, everybody in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any who oppose, same sign. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Does any Commissioner want to remove any item from the consent for individual discussion? If not, do I have a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Next on the agenda is old business. There is one item and it is ordinance 2025 dash zero two. An ordinance amending text to a zoning ordinance. Any discussion by the board? Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Next is new business, legal issues.
All I have are three, excuse me, release of maintenance performance bonds by the surveyor's office.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Uh, next up is consideration for social media policy. Any discussion?
I move to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Uh, next up is consideration of the BCS management contract.
Uh, I moved to table this item. It's not ready for consideration yet.
Okay. I'll second. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Same sign. Next up, project 2023 dash zero eight, replacement of EA 021, a construction agreement. Milestone contractor, sorry about that. Nick?
Nick, Boone County Highway. Uh, this is an agreement for replacement of small structure in Pineview, subdivision which is on Pineview Drive north of 96th Street. This is the project we discussed at the last meeting, awarding to the second highest, or the second bidder, second highest bidder, uh, due to the, the first bidder not being responsive. So this agreement is for milestone contractors. The total amount of this agreement is $397,700. Uh, NDOT will match 50% of the total construction amount, which is $198,850. Uh, we have to execute this agreement to then, uh, get form submitted NDOT to get our check coming for 50% of this agreement. So, uh, requesting execution of this, uh, so we can get moving on, uh, the next phase of the project.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Nick, next up, Boone County Senior Services.
Good morning, Anita Bowlen, Boone County Senior Services and Boone Area Transit System. I'm here today on a couple of items. The first is the grant that the Boone County Commissioners would receive for transit operation for 2026. We have submitted all of our documents to the county attorney for review. In regard to the operating grant, which we would request in the amount of $803,635. This is a federal grant with a 50-50 match requirement, so, uh, we will have to raise state and local funds 50% of that dollar amount. In addition, we are also requesting two low-floor minivans accessible to replace two vans in our fleet that are no longer useful due to their life expectancy. And the, um, grant this year for 2026 requires a federal share of 85% and a local share of 15%. So the total van cost, uh, per vehicle is $75,000. That breaks down to[388.14][388.65]$63,750 and $11,250 for the 85 and the 50% uh, per vehicle. We are also bringing to you this morning the annual lease agreement, which we do each year for vehicles that are still titled to the Boone County Commissioners. Currently, there would be seven vehicles on that third-party use lease agreement. Um, all minivans or small transit buses that we are still using, still useful in the fleet. And we appreciate the opportunity to continue to partner with the Boone County Commissioners. And I have my board approval to continue to operate as the public transit provider for the county for 2026. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any discussion?
Can we just do this in one motion?
You can.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much. Next, uh, agent of record letter for property and casualty insurance.
Um, so we have a, uh, agent of record letter in front of us uh, so that we can go out to market. Uh, this issue was kind of brought to my attention about a month ago um, as part of a NeoGov meeting, uh, where we, the auditor didn't have a statement of assets. Um, so I started asking questions and, um, basically, the only way that unlike homeowners insurance where you can go out to market and get quotes from various vendors with insurance, uh, the way this works evidently in government is once you have a, uh, agent of record and they go to market, it shuts out anybody else from getting any other quotes. So, I think it makes sense for us to put a fresh set of eyes on this, um, insurance. And the only way we can do that is by issuing an agent of record letter. For example, one thing I also, uh, discovered in just a little bit of research is uh, we have the Mapleview Living Facility that's still on our, uh, that's on our insurance policy. And evidently, it was torn down in 2018, so, um, that's why it's before us and I think it makes sense to do that, so, um, I don't know if anybody else has any comments, but...
I do. Once you re- release that agent of record, and you just said this, to make, I want to make sure I understand this, then only that new company who gets it, gets to bid on it and it locks everyone else out. That's what you said?
Yes.
So we're not, all we're doing is cutting this off a year early and we cannot do any RFPs at all now. Not this year or next year. If we do this, if we do this agent of record, it cuts out the RFPs.
We can, the, the agent of record can be changed at any time.
And what exactly are they wanting to look at? Because we can limit what they look at in an agent of record.
Well, it allows, uh, the agent of record letter would allow them to go to market on our insurance, on our behalf.
And we're, and we're now cutting out, uh, doing this a year early to cut out the, the RFPs. Under the way we've done this in the past, we've always had a three-year contract. We do RFPs. Uh, this is late at doing RFPs right now, because you need to do this in, in early April, late March, early April. You need at least 90 days to go through this whole process, because they have to come in and evaluate everything that we've got. And, uh, our, uh, our insurance would end then on June 30th. So that's basically 30 days. No company can come in and do a complete inspection of everything in 30 days. I just, I, I do not agree with this. I think that we, we need to keep this in, in using the RFPs so that we have, have several companies that come in to, uh, to look at the whole picture. We do not ever limit an RFP to only one company. It is open like every other RFP. Multiple companies can come in to take a look at that. And this is limiting it to one company right now, a year early, and I do not agree with that at all.
Well, it's limited to one company now. So all I want to do is have somebody fresh take a look at it.
And we did that two years ago with an RFP.
I can't add to this. I wasn't here two years ago, but it makes sense to have a fresh set of eyes on everything. There's, uh, apparently there's, you've uncovered something with the the living quarters or the, the building at the Mapleview home. I don't know. I don't know if it's still on there. It's, it's listed on our insurance as we're making payments seven years later.
It's listed on the insurance. That's, that's what I know.
Yeah, I don't, I can't answer that.
I'd, I'd like for Kyle from, uh, to come up and...
Can I comment on Mapleview real quick? So, and I don't know much about the insur, Max, been in Boone County. Um, I don't know how the insurance is, um, set up in the account, but there are still three buildings on the property and, um, that is how we've labeled that property as Mapleview. So to see it show up, um, and, and if the rates haven't changed since the nursing home came down, then that's one thing, but there are, the, the property is still there and then there are buildings and assets still in those buildings. So, I mean, looking at it makes sense, but we didn't make sure that the property is insured unless we incorporate it with the Justice Center.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know.
What buildings is it showing insured?
It shows like a, a Maple Living, or Mapleview Living, Mapleview Living two-car garage, Mapleview Living three-car garage, I believe, or something like that.
So, yeah, the two-car, the three-car, and then a bar.
Kyle, could you?
Morning Commissioners.
Morning.
How are you today?
Good.
Donna, you have questions?
Yeah, um, yeah, just, uh, um, could you explain, because of my past history in the insurance business of being on Board of Directors?
Could you state your name and address? Yeah, I'm Kyle Rouser with Walker Hughes Insurance. So I work closely with Dan Lamar, who's also a local, uh, uh, this office. Certainly, long-term relationship with Boone County, the agency has over the years since, I believe, World War II, so certainly a long-term issue. We'd hope to continue if at all possible.
And I've talked to Dan and he couldn't be here today.
He couldn't be here. He had to take his wife to the doctor and, and couldn't be here. Regrettably, we certainly sense his remorse.
Sorry for interrupting.
The, um, in, in the past, and I want to make sure I had my statements correct here, it's a three-year contract with you currently and an RFP every three years. And I had my timing down correct and I on, on when most companies want to start looking at that is at least at a minimum of 90 days prior to the, to the end of that contract.
That is correct. Generally, you would look at, uh, the insurance every three years with most municipalities. A lot of them that we deal with, uh, for sure. And we'd be coming up on the third year of, of that term since we moved to Travelers there a few years ago. Because, you know, the market conditions in municipality world have changed greatly in the last few years, especially counties with deals. Uh, law enforcement liability coverages are definitely a challenge to, to secure, uh, in a comprehensive package like we used to. But luckily, a couple of years ago, we were able to, to secure that. The Travelers have been fortunate to continue with them and would hope to continue through this next year as well. And, and obviously, market the Boone County out to all the different carriers that will do that, which are, have become less and less, because one of the carriers, Tokyo Marine, that Boone County had before, we had moved to them, uh, you know, a few years before that, and they completely got out of the, the market, which really put us in a bind with a lot of our municipal accounts, uh, for sure. And in this case, uh, obviously, Travelers stepped up and we were able to secure a comprehensive package, which I think you'll find very competitive in the marketplace today. To the, the, the property question, we certainly look into that on the statement of values. I don't know if there's a house label or if there's other things we can certainly address changes with that. We're very certainly hands-on with Boone County. I did some, um, some research, you know, as far as activity-wise. I mean, it seems like via phone calls, activities, uh, whatnot, we're dealing with Boone County business probably at least two times a day on, on, on site. So certainly has our attention. We have our staff. We have got our president, Zach Cibrel here today, our chief sales officer, Nick Meticon, and then our service leader, Amanda Bailey. So between the five of us, uh, with Dan as well, you know, we certainly have a lot of eyes on this account to make sure we do a good job. And certainly, we worked with, uh, like with Max on the jail project and all that. We, we did several inspections with Travelers on that as that was being built and the new Justice Center. So certainly, a, a lot of good things happening as Boone County continues to grow. So I would ask that we, you know, at least continue with the last year of our contract, you know, and then certainly let the, the RFQ or RFP process play out accordingly. But it generally would take 90 to 120 days, certainly, for an agency to do that.
Any other questions?
I don't have any questions.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. Appreciate your time.
Any other discussion? Any, uh...
Well, I mean, like I, like I mentioned, I'm always, I'm, I come from a contracting world where we get competitive bids. This is the, this is the only way, the way this is set up, to get a second look at our insurance. So, a- and I think it's worth taking a second look. Like I said, we can change agent of record at any time. So with that in mind, I'm interested in having, having a second look, taking out our insurance. So I'll put a motion on the table that we approve this agent of record letter.
I'll second your motion. I want to see, I, I think it's important for us to move forward and get the best idea we can for Boone County and save as much money as we can and provide the best insurance we can, so. This doesn't harm any employees type of thing. This is casualty and property, so, uh...
Commissioners, may I just might make just one more comment? May I make one more comment?
What's that?
Well, I was just saying, by doing this agent of record letter, essentially, Boone County would be fired and walk the queues.
Yeah.
As, as the agent of record. And I guess, um, if that were going to happen, I mean, uh, I guess I'd be curious to know maybe, you know, why we would be fired considering we've got one year left on our agreement. Because essentially, then we'd be out of the, the equation depending on who you're wanting to move the, the account to. So generally, that's, generally, again, you would do this on a three-year basis and we, you know, have one year left on our agreement.
Well, like I said, I, what I started to say, I, I want to, I don't know what this is, can you explain why the Mapleview Living is still on?
I can't without looking at it further. It sounds like...
I don't have a copy of it.
We do have some buildings still there from that location.
Right.
Is that correct, Max? So if that's the case, then you're supposed to insure them. Obviously, we probably needed to have some of those on there. So, I mean, as far as letting another agency quote Boone County's insurance, I mean, you could certainly have another agency do that without changing the agent of record with Travelers. I mean, they would have options to go to other markets to get that as well. But again, I think the timeline here is really, um, shortened with, because we're, you know, 60 days out from the renewal and to get an inspection on an account like this would be hard to get done.
I'm not privy to the insurance committee. Have you spoken with the insurance committee and?
No, the insurance committee's on, it's, it's med, deals with medical insurance.
Okay. Okay.
So I, I, you know, appreciate the opportunity, just trying to make sure we're clear. We want, we want to do the best job for Boone County as well. Certainly, next year when our three-year agreement is up, we'll go to market and try to get the best package we can. And you can always, they have other agencies do the same thing. So I just think with the tradition, the history, to my knowledge, I mean, this, this location you mentioned, Commissioner Byer, that we can look into that and certainly get that corrected. That's not a problem. But I do feel like we, we spend a lot of time and do a lot of, uh, service for the, the account and try to keep it, uh, up to date.
Question for you. When you say the, the agent of record, if, if that's passed today, then you are done today with that, or is there a time period?
I mean, yeah, we'd be effective today. So, or you, they give a 10, 10 days for like a right of decision or something like that. Essentially, yeah, we'd be done, we'd be fired, and the new agent would take over.
But our insurance would continue until June 30?
Correct. Yes. And some companies won't do a, uh, necessary midterm agent of record either. Some of them may only make it effective at the renewal dates as well. So which is, you're coming up on that, you know, close enough in 60 days. That's, that could be a possibility. But essentially, we'd be, you know, I think, I just want to make sure whatever happens down the road that, you know, we do the best job we can for Boone County. We want to make sure that there's any holes or gaps in this interim where, you know, in this transition. So I, I think given the timeliness, again, that's why I would ask that, uh, continue one more year to finish out our agreement and then, you know, take other bids or, uh, from there.
Well, I mean, there would, that's kind of the whole point is, you say take other bids, but there's only one agent of record to get a bid at a time. So, I mean, that's, that's why I'm interested in...
Well, I, that's, that's generally the case. Generally, you would say, okay, the, the Boone County would pick the broker they want to work with. And if that's not Walker Hughes, I don't know who that is. But I guess I would say that other brokers could go to market and get quotes from other carriers, um, with, as well. So with that, and let, maybe it's a situation where Walker Hughes, you know, continues to service and shop for, with Travelers with the renewal and, and whatnot. Or you could have other carriers, uh, work within other, other agencies too, to come up with. Sometimes I think the 60, we're 60 days out. I think that's going to be hard for someone to, to come up, you know, with as well. So I, and I just don't want anything to happen service-wise with Boone County, because there's a lot really going on all the time here. And like I said, we, we probably spend, uh, you know, definitely a great deal of time trying to make sure we're keeping things up to date.
Yeah, I mean, I, I spoke with two other brokers just to confirm that, number one, that only one broker can go to market and they've both said that there's sufficient time, so...
And that is true with the, the broker going to market, um, certainly, uh, and, but that's normally carrier-specific. So like, for example, but the way I'm hearing what you're talking about, you're looking to fire Walker Hughes as the current agent and bring on someone else to do everything for you. Um, and you don't necessarily have to do that to get someone else to look at it, although we're seeing more and more of that, um, as time goes on with, uh, having access to records and information and things like that. Generally, not in a situation where, I guess, um, if we're being fired, then generally, there'd be a service or an issue to that. And I guess I'm not aware of anything at that level, unless you guys want to tell me about something we're really missing on.
So you're saying we can get other bids retaining you as agent of record right now?
Correct.
Another broker.
Well, you could use another broker to shop out with different carriers, you know, like, I don't know, you know, who you're looking to move to, but they could certainly shop other broker, other carriers. And like, for example, like, we have the county insured with Travelers for the main package piece. And you can say, well, we'll shop that with Travelers and you can say you can give another carrier, you know, to another agency or maybe multiple, um, agencies as that might, to split them up differently however you want to do, if that makes sense or not.
So you would have, I'm sorry, I have no vote, but I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah.
You have exclusive access to Travelers?
We would, yes. So at this point, and I don't know how specific the, 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 the motion is, if you're willing to remove Walker Hughes as the current agent of record period for Boone County, or if you're just saying, hey, you'd like to open up to other brokers to pull other carriers for Boone County. Because we have like the Work Comp is through IEP, which is, does a lot of municipal work throughout the states. And then obviously, the rest of the pieces is all with Travelers.
Yeah, this is only property and casualty. We're not Workers Comp or Health.
Okay, Workers Comp generally would be a part of the property and casualty package. So, and again, you could have another broker maybe shop out to other carriers. Obviously, we'd be happy to do that as well. Um, but we would generally do that every three years, which, like I said, we've got, we, we thought we had one year left on our agreement. And obviously, we'd like to continue.
If we retain Walker Hughes and go to bid with another broker, can this be done in the timeframe? Can we get bids? That's what, that's ultimately what we want, is we want bids, right?
Well, right, but to, to his point, he just said, like, whoever they're with right now, Travelers for example, another broker won't be able to go get a quote from Travelers.
That's, that would be correct.
If you're going to open it up to do, to keep them as our, our, our agent and open it up for the others, then, then you got to do an RFP. You got to, you can't just pick one company to come in and do that.
Well, as...
In my, that's my opinion on that, is that you're, you're, you're now narrowing that down to one company that can come in and bid on this in the next 60 days. And I think if you're going to do that, then you, you need to do it the correct way. But I'll refer that to legal counsel.
RFP to be the broker.
To be the broker, yes.
There's no bids.
No, it's okay.
Sorry, I was saying that wrong. Yes, RFP to be the broker, yes.
You could certainly have another broker shop other carriers that are out there even during this time without more or less, uh, firing Walker Hughes as the agent. That, does that make sense?
Repeat that one more time.
Well, you could have another agency look at other carriers. You could sit, normally in a, if you go through with the RFP, RFQ process, if you have more than one or two agencies, you might give each one of those certain carriers to, to shop the insurance for Boone County with. And so you could pick and choose what carriers you wanted, uh, to go from, from that point.
Does that make sense? So you, they would continue to do?
I know not being able to get Travelers is probably going to be pretty hard, because I know insuring the county sheriff's department is a hard one. And Travelers is one that does do that, so. I, I don't know if there's others. I'm sure nationwide there is. I don't, I don't know who it would be.
There are other brokers for sure. I don't know, you know, again, I feel like the last couple of years since, since we were, you know, we've kind of been in a tough spot there a couple of years ago with Tokyo Marine exited the market and, you know, really fortunate to get, uh, Travelers to step up. And I feel like have a, a really good relationship and still do, so, and look forward to continuing that. So I would just be cautious. You just don't, we don't want to do anything to disrupt any service or any other issues for Boone County regardless of, of what might happen.
So, so question. If, if we were to execute this agent of record letter and whatever we got back we didn't like for some reason, it would be impossible for us to switch to you guys?
Well, I wouldn't say it'd be impossible, but that would be pretty improbable. I'm not... Well, I wouldn't say it'd be impossible, but that would be pretty improbable, I've not seen anything like that happen where you fired the current agent of record to have another agent of record maybe shop it out to come back within maybe sixty, ninety days if something didn't happen.
So, so essentially, it's impossible, the way the current system is set up, to get more than one bid with numbers from a broker, I mean, that's what you're telling me?
Well, no, I wouldn't say that, you could, I think timeframe is what's gonna be a challenge for another broker to come in and, and, and maybe get other competitive bids, does that make sense?
Well, I, I mean, let's take the timeframe out of it, take the timeframe out of it, there's, you can't have two brokers go to market and get quotes from the same vendors.
Correct, but there are enough carriers, you could, a lot of times in an, an RFP situation, you would assign carriers, different carriers to different brokers, if that makes sense, and then everyone brings their best one to the table. But again, that would generally happen, you know, you know, a hundred and twenty days out where, you know, there's a lot of time to, to, for everyone to research and, and work with those carriers on those.
So then can there be dual agents of record? If what you're proposing, I have separate agents that are shopping separate markets, can there be dual?
Well, generally, again, there could be, yeah, you could have a separate broker for the, like, Travelers packaging for the IPEP package, for example, that would not be common, as a general rule, you would have that with one broker.
But, but we couldn't have dual agents, that's, I like that idea, by the way, uh, we, we, what would be great is if we could have dual agents of record and they both can go to the same vendors, but.
And that, that would be, that, that would, companies are gonna want you to pick what broker they're wanting.
But you can divide the vendors.
That's correct, that's exactly right, that's why I'm saying vendor side, you can actually say, when you've got two or three, you can go one, one agency, two or three to one, and two or three to the other, depending on how many you wanna, you know, have look at the package, that's correct.
So you're saying you could split up the IPEP and the Tokyo, or not Tokyo, sorry, wrong, Travelers?
You could do that.
You could have that separate, separate companies.
Records on that, again, it wouldn't be common, and most of the time, through most municipality accounts, you would have one main agent of record to handle both, because there's a lot of things that cross over here and there, but it certainly could be that, could be done.
I mean, I know it's confusing, I mean, Scott, you've asked a lot of questions, I mean, I'm interested in whatever we can do to have a competitive process, because that's what benefits the people that we work for. I mean, to have, to, to, to have a process that limits competition does not benefit the people, and, I mean, unfortunately, this is the, this is the only way that we can even go get, look at another number, is to, to, to switch agents of record before the end of the contract. I mean, it's, it's kind of crazy to me that, why would you set up a multi-year contract with a single-source vendor? Again, where's the benefit for the people that we serve in doing that? It makes no sense, none.
Well, a lot of times the carriers like that as well, because, I mean, they're getting, there's.
Well, of course, yeah, I mean, the. Why wouldn't they?
So, I'm just saying with the market condition, it's really not easy to move around year to year with municipalities anymore, especially counties, because of the, the law enforcement and jail exposures, for sure. And I just wanna make sure that there are no glitches on service for Boone County, and I can appreciate, and we'd be happy to take it out to market as well, and do that every three years, we just, we would like to honor, I guess, our commitments as well.
If you go to a, a yearly contract, let's say, insurance never stays the same, it, it can be cheaper i- in the second year, or it can be more expensive, but when you do a three-year contract, it's locked in for three years.
There are cases of exposure, but generally, you know, the carriers do like that, to know that they're gonna have an opportunity to work with that account for those three years, and generally that'll help you be more competitive too, because you don't wanna be in a bad situation where you'd have a, an absolutely horrendous claims year, you know, and then try to, you know, then you're non-renewed and trying to, to move around, it's not easy, and that's essentially what we had a couple of years ago, and we certainly don't wanna have to, to do that again if we don't have to, for sure.
This three-year term, is that with the broker, or is that with the carrier?
Generally it would be with both.
Because I haven't seen any contracts, so, as the attorney, that's what bothers me.
Sure.
In this equation, which, which contract are we talking about?
Generally, it would be with the broker every three years, and then generally, it's kind of, I would say, within the broker world, you know, they would shop the account every three years, that, that's just how we generally be a business practice from that standpoint.
Is, is there a signed contract?
Not to my knowledge, no, I mean, I believe it was approved at a meeting, I mean, a few years ago, shouldn't have been around this time of the year, or maybe a little bit later, but, you know.
It's in the minutes.
It's just been, or, or been voted on in the past by the commissioners.
I know time is of the essence on this, I would certainly like to learn more, I know it's gonna make it tough, but I'd like to table this thing until the next meeting, until we can all get our arms wrapped around it a little bit better. That's what I'd like to see.
Well, we, so we have a, we have a motion and a second on the table. I, well, like I said, I don't know what benefit there is to not, or what, what is, what benefit is there to people, to the people that we serve to delaying this or to not taking a second look? I mean, if we delay it to the next meeting, we're, we're running the risk that, I, I mean, I've been, I've been told that there's enough time now, if we delay it another two weeks, I don't know. It, to me, it doesn't make, I mean, evidently, there's no written contract, so, you know, what, what other, I mean, Scott, you've been sitting here for what, four months now, and there've just been all kinds of obstacles put in front of us just for wanting to take a look at some new things. This is just another situation where we're having obstacles put in front of us, again, when all we wanna do is take a look at something different to benefit the people that we serve.
I agree with that, but I wanna be sure that we're doing right by the people as well, and I'm not convinced in my heart that it's being done without looking at every, I wanna look at every option at this point.
The rules of procedure that we adopted stated that any motion to table trumps the pending motion, so if you want to move to table, that would trump the motion that had been previously made.
I would, yes, I would like to move to table until the next meeting.
Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate your time.
Third-party vendor to inspect the Earn K Hudson Justice Center before release, uh, we're gonna move that one, that one's kind of on me, uh, and I didn't, with Easter and a lot going on last week, I didn't get everything done with, uh, the third-party vendor to, to have him here, so, I'd like to table that one until the next meeting.
Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Okay, staff reports, area plan. I'm looking here, I've got a couple of different things going. Capital investments, Max. Health department. Highway, Nick. Human. I don't know what that was, but I'll take that as a positive sign. Human resources isn't here today, IT support.
Best Monday ever.
Communications. Nothing for communications, right? In an effort to make this more streamlined, I've got a little bit of a script I'm trying to learn here, so, uh, next is public comment, and remember, uh, if you wanna do public comment, you, uh, approach the podium, state your name and address, it'll limit to three minutes, and with that, I'll say, anybody public comment? Sorry?
Lisa Bruder, Boone County Clerk, and we the people, um, I just wanna say, like, Tim, you said, what's the harm in doing this, I, we're just looking, you keep saying this, we're just looking, but you keep changing. Like, we, I get that there might be some things that do need change, but we gotta start, I mean, I, I said this is the first day of meeting, how far are we going back? So, now we're back in a year and a half, but we're trying to, it's gotta stop, move forward. Can you, I mean, we have to work in a professional together, the post on Facebook ridiculous, but we still have to work together. I believe one hundred percent that I serve the county, I serve the people, and I find it ironic that you have come out in the political atmosphere in two years and you want to dictate what we've all been doing and learning and working on. So if you guys haven't seen this post, you might want to, because it's ridiculous.
If you accept anyone else on your public comment?
Uh, my name is Tilda, forty-eight fifty-five North two seventy-five West, I know I already passed the zoning ordinance change, and I know it sounds like all that was changing was we can have a PUD under sewer and septic, but I feel like that's misleading, because if you read the beginning portion of this, it says that all PUDs essentially, unless I'm wrong, and please correct me, will pay reasonable regard, so that's like item two, reasonable regard to the current conditions and the character of the structures in each district, by providing greater flexibility in the location in cases where it, there is close proximity to the interstate highway. So we're saying, in addition to having a PUD now permitted to be under sewer and septic, we're gonna have even greater flexibility if that location is in close proximity to a highway. We then say, PUDs will pay reasonable regard to the most desirable use for which land is adopted, except again, providing for greater flexibility in the location for a PUD in cases where the location is in close proximity to a highway. And then, how, how are we saying that the only thing that is changing is that we're allowing it to be on septic and sewer, and then add inherent language, that in adopting this, you're also, what is greater flexibility? Why, what, what is being in proximity to a highway have to do with getting greater flexibility than any other PUD anywhere else in the county?
So, so that was an example, uh, so, the acreage, th- this was why we tapered it last week, because it was a little bit confusing, uh, even how it was presented at the Area Plan Commission, because the original language that was proposed to us a couple of meetings ago, um, referred to like an acreage requirement within, within so many feet of interchange or whatever, which was still in, so the, the thousand acres was an arbitrary requirement, right?
Right, that one's fine.
And so the, and, and then even the change, the fifty acres or whatever it was, when you're within so many feet of an interchange, that was still arbitrary, so that's why, that's why I specifically proposed that we just get rid of the acreage requirement, and, um, and in the area plan, I was in agreement with that, from my understanding, although I think your recommendation was just one recommendation on those changes.
The recommendation was to send it back to you folks with an unfavorable recommendation, except they were amendable to the size, but not.
Correct.
Giving a PUD on septic and sewer until, and city water, sorry, great.
So the PUD, so it's, the way it reads now, just to clarify that a little bit too, is it says, all uses within a PUD shall be connected to water and sewer services and shall not be on well and septic.
Okay, so I'm reading from the old one.
So then, what was added to that statement, it says, provided however, if water and sewer services are not available to a parcel included within the PUD at the time such proposal is adopted, then the PUD shall provide a commitment to connect such parcels and the uses thereon to water and sewer services at the time such utilities become available to serve the parcels.
Correct, so we're saying, for example, when, I don't know, sixty-seven, forty-seven, sixty-five and forty-seven, and I wanted to keep the PUD out there where there's utilities.
Right.
I can make it the commitment as the developer or whomever to just be on septic and sewer, sorry, to be on septic and well water until Lebanon or whomever got water out there, whether there is a plan to ever get water out there or not, but eventually, if by some phrase, someone struck gold and found water, then they'll connect to the water, but those of us who live there under well water with zero ground protections, we're putting an arbitrary, like, you're basically saying you can take Anson in White Sound and plop it over there at the moment, because there's no utilities, and put it on sewer, sorry, and put it on septic and well water, you're running a town on septic and well water until Lebanon magically finds water to put out there.
Yeah, so, so there would be some practical.
Where are those practical guidelines? You could ask it without the guidelines, there's no guideline.
There would be some practical limitations to that, because, you know, like a, a septic field on a, I mean, like, a, a home, for example, I mean, I think right now, it, there's kind of some conflicting information in our ordinance, but it, it requires either an acre or two acres, just, a lot size just for a home, that's because that's the room you need for a septic system, for example, it's really the septic that drives the size, so, the, the way I view the, you know, if, if a developer comes in and says, hey, we wanna move faster than sewer and water can get there, which is really be the only reason to do it, they would still have to install the infrastructure for the sewer and the water, so, they would essentially be choosing on their own to spend more dollars to get their project done quicker.
I get that, but they're still going to be consuming well water.
Ri- well, they, they could, correct.
That is what they're.
But, but each, it, this isn't just saying, e- each situation has to be considered on its own, it's, it's just allowing that possibility, I mean, it, it may be that, based on the particular development, that there may be limits to what they can, they can do.
So what is, why does it matter whether you're next to a highway or fifty-two or sixty-five, what does it matter proximity to an interstate highway, giving you further greater flexibility?
It doesn't, that was, that's the confusing part that's in there, that's in the whereas's parts, which is kind of the explanation, the, but, but the ordinance itself is just black and white, there's, there's no acreage requirement, and then PUDs still need to be connected to water and sewer, but if in the interim, because of what the developer's choosing to do, they wanna, they wanna do beyond well and septic for, septic for an interim time period, then that, that permits it, although they still have to come through with, you know, there's still other approvals, uh, you know.
Maybe I can help from a legal perspective, so the first two pages of that ordinance identify, we call it just the whereas's, right, it's an explanation of why I'm doing what I'm doing, that's it, the actual ordinance that will be codified is Exhibit A, so the language that says about the interstate highway, that was just to give an example, that some projects might be restricted in their ability to get acreage, because I have a major road that's near me. a major road that's near me. That could be applicable to any road. I can only get so much acreage because I've got a road that's bound, that's binding my project. So that's not actually codified, that's not part of the law. The law is only once identified in Exhibit A, if that helps with that particular concern. And this is not an actual PUD, like a project that's coming forward. These are the minimal requirements. I know, I read between the lines. This is, those are the minimum requirements to be eligible to get one. So you still have to go through, are you on the APC?
Oh, yeah, I will go through all of them.
Oh, I didn't know if you were a board member. I'm sorry, I don't know who's...
No, I am not. I am just we the people, I am nobody.
I don't do that. You are, you are people. We're not the people. There are PUD ordinances for particular projects that will have to come forward. This is only the enabling that dictates what is eligible and not eligible.
It just seems a bit, I know you weren't here last year, but it seems a bit convenient that we had a proposal that did not meet the minimum requirements, that it was in close proximity to the highway, and that is the only one that I know of. And now we're rewriting an entire Boone County ordinance to accommodate, it sounds like, whether it's real or perceived, a proposal that would not meet the minimum requirements, and you have every right to change it. And then, like, put all this language in here and say, well, that's just trying to explain, like, how, how we were gonna do it. It doesn't mean anything. Just look at the bold side. Like, it just seems like, you know, magician, like, trying to show you the cards while I'm picking your pocket, so it's just, please, if, if we're gonna do it, put the guardrails in, put, put it, like, clear, and if it's gray to you, it's even grayer to us. So, this is not, whomever is developing forty-seven comments, I guess, but it sounds a lot like it is. Thank you for your time. I know I just...
When you're, when you're talking about the water use and the wells and everything, that's regulated by DNR. So you need to look up those rules. We do not regulate the water that's used. DNR does. At, at a hundred thousand gallons per day is where they start regulating your water, which is thirty-six million gallons per year. So DNR is the one that regulates the water usage over a hundred thousand gallons per day. So anybody can dig a well and pump ten thousand gallons a day to whether it's to a farm, to a pond, whatever they're doing, they can do that because they're not regulated by DNR. Boone County does not regulate the flow of water, period.
I agree, and none of us have groundwater rights, right? Absolutely. But you have been given the responsibility by the people to ensure, and you said it here, orderly and harmonious development and investment in Boone County. So if that is a responsibility that people have been given to you, you have your authority to decide what can and can't go somewhere, having considered that you, only DNR can control how much water somebody pumps. So if a project comes to you and it seems as though that project is going to consume more than whatever DNR would control, maybe y'all should consider it as servants of the community and protect us people who have to live there and share water with us.
We cannot override DNR.
You don't have to override DNR, but you can approve and disapprove a project.
You, you can also call DNR right now, and they can come out and inspect your well and measure it and do everything for that and record it. So if you have a problem, then you call them back, and then corrections can be made.
So then y'all should require any developer to provide to you what amount of water they intend to use per day, per year, however many gallons, so you have fact-based data to make your decisions on. And I don't want to, I've used all of my three minutes and I don't want to argue with you guys, I just wanted to express my, it's not, I appreciate the time. It's not, I'm not here to be difficult, I'm not here to say we can't build anywhere. I'm just saying, we have to put more thought, we put, somebody told me, we put more thought into what we make for dinner than we do in some of the developments that we're doing out here. It's just ridiculous. Lily is literally, as a crow flies, two miles from that development. We have to consider the people that live there. That's all I have, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any other, hello, Carol?
Carol, can I, can I survey her? I do sit on the APC. I just wanted to clarify one thing that she, she was coming in on it. It is my take that with this new ordinance, the way that I do read it, is that the current, the existing PUD before this change does require that a PUD must have sewer and water prior to being, becoming a PUD. With this change, the way that I view it as an APC member, and the way that I've been, I've talked to three different attorneys, and they have told me that I am correct on what I'm stating, is that at this point with this change, the requirement for a PUD, any PUD, and I'm not, I'm not specific on one, I'm not talking about one, any PUD from now on does not have to have sewer and water immediately in connection, does not have to have a plan for sewer and water. It's just stating that, that once it becomes available, then they will put in at that point. So that is my take on it, and that's the way I will proceed as an APC member.
Thank you. Anyone else? Debbie?
Well, I do have some...
I don't think it's about the PUD, no.
It is not about the PUD. I do know. I was just...
Tell by the look on your face.
I was just looking up here, Debbie, out here, recorder, I was wondering if there could be some kind of policy for the names that are listed up here? We have one that says guest. I think it's fair to know who's looking in. But the other one, and I don't think it's probably you, says the Tim Byer.
No, I'm not logged in.
Now, I don't think you're doing online and you're in person, but, and I don't know if that can even be determined or not, but I think that's just a little strange to me, because anybody could put anybody's name up there. Is there a way to, for, I mean, is there, I mean, we know that that's not Tim Byer, but I, can you at least say that you can't use the word guest and you have to use a real name? Because, I don't know, but I just think it's kind of strange that Tim Byer's up there.
I don't know if we can control what people put as a name, and who's...
That would be, that would be asking IT than if they don't comply.
Oh, okay.
I always think about enforcing, so I can, I can, you can do things, but then how do you enforce it? So that would be asking IT, what do I do?
You can't, you can't take them from looking or anything.
Why do I not show them?
I just think that's unfair, because anybody's name could be used, and if you weren't here by chance...
With the new setup that we're going to, with the webinar-style setup, you won't even see them. They'll just be viewing, and that problem will go away. But that, we have to get their...
I think that's, I just think it's unfair that...
But if you want, if you want to talk during the meeting, then you can come in like this, right?
Our rules of procedure do not allow people to speak electronically.
Oh, okay. Anyone else, public comment? Going once, going twice? Approval of claims?
Move to approve claims.
Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign? Any commissioners' comments?
I have none.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I have none. I'm sorry. I didn't say allow that for you.
I don't have any.
I have none as well. Since there's no other business, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.